But I'm just going to ask each of you to introduce yourself and then we'll go to the questions. And why don't we start at the end of this one?
Hello, my name is Lourdes Ramirez. I'm running for Sarasota County Commission, District 4. And I want to become a county commissioner because I want to represent you and not the developers. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me if I talk with that annoying thing?
It's being recorded, so they will appreciate it.
Hi there, Mike Costantino, born and raised in Sarasota County. I've had a few years lawsuit against Sarasota County to keep beach road on CEST Key and public ownership control. And quite frankly, the criminal-esque way that they have treated me during that phase has led me to realize that you've got to be on the inside to fix problems. And that's why I'm under the Sarasota County Commission.
Hello, everyone. My name is Wesleyan Bex and I too, running for county commission, if you could guess. I'm running to represent citizens of this county to value environmental protection, which seems like a likely crowd here, affordable housing and sustainable development.
Hello, everyone. I'm Alexandra Coe and I'm running for county commission, District 2. Basically, my platform boils down to many things that we're talking about this evening. I'm running on conservation. Our ecology is our economy. I'm running on transparency in our government. Where there's corruption, there is no freedom. And the final thing is resilience. We need to build a resilient community in Sarasota and we need to have the will to do that locally. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ruta Maria Gignari and I'm also running for Sarasota County Commissioner in District 2. I'm running to make sure we have environmental protections put in place, proper infrastructure for ourselves and our future, and to make sure we have sustainable growth.
Thank you. And we will do the same thing where we just go around. So we'll start with Ruta. First question is, as we've heard before, according to Flood IQ data, category 3 hurricane, where it hit today, 5,709 homes in Sarasota would be at risk. Sea level rise, in addition to this same category 3 hurricane, would cause flooding-related problems to damage 5,864 homes, say, by 2033. What do we need to do now to protect our homes? Ruta?
Well, I think one of the first things we have to do as voters is vote for people who are pro-environment and not just for development and making profits. We have to make sure that we have people in the commission that are aware that we have to make sure that we don't okay the developers for building on our wetlands and not protecting them, to closing, to making sure we have safe and secure infrastructure, which they've ignored, where we don't have proper evacuation roads throughout the county. These are some of the things that we have to ensure for our future and also to make sure that we work on building up estuaries and mangroves to protect our waterways and making sure that if they're building the roads, we have to start building them up now. We have examples in Miami we need to learn from and my time is up, so thank you.
Well, this question specifically addresses the issue of flooding and home loss. So locally, there's actually three things that I would propose. The first thing is, we need to maintain the infrastructure that we already have, all of the ditches and the drainage ditches in our community. Those things are only worked on by request. There's no standard work order to maintain those things. They're only worked on if you call and complain. We need to change that because we need to address those things. Secondly, we need to preserve our rural lands because our rural lands are essential to avoiding flooding and mitigating stormwater drainage. And the last thing is, we need to be prepared to ask ourselves a very serious question. Maybe we should not be building on barrier islands anymore.
So I echo a lot of what those ladies have already said. What we can do immediately is follow in the footsteps of the city of Sarasota, which recently put out an environmental impact study grading our infrastructure on what is most vulnerable, how we can either retrofit, upgrade it, or in some cases even relocate it. But we haven't seen that done in a countywide issue, countywide state. And then second to that, I think that we need to be taking after Miami. There's actually four counties that compose a coalition and all of the municipal governments in all four of those counties leverage their resources to tackle this issue. I see no reason why our Gulf Coast counties cannot do the same.
Would you be kind enough to repeat the question? The question was, according to Flood IQ, which is now providing some data, data about the Tampa Bay area, sea level rise plus a hurricane category 3 would cause flooding, damaging, let's see, I must have read this wrong, no, 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 5,864 homes in Sarasota. And that's 5,709 now, 5,864 in 2033. What should we be doing now to protect those areas?
Sure. Okay. Mike Costantino, my dad started Costantino Construction in the 50s. I think we built this church in the 60s. I got the Governor's Point of Light Award for hurricane relief work after Charlie and the President's Point of Light Award for hurricane relief work after Katrina in Mississippi. I've got pictures of I-10 overpass in Mississippi where there was 14 feet of saltwater seven miles from the bay. So if we get big low like that, my number one recommendation would be pay your insurance. There's huge flooding issues, there's ways to waterproof houses. We have FEMA mandated 50% rule. The building elevations as dedicated by FEMA are actually working for new construction. But the main thing we have to do is keep our insurance companies solid. We really need to know what to do when it happens. And I would try to get away from drywall. 75% of the water damage that happened after Hurricane Katrina?
Of course, I agree with what everybody says here, especially about the fact that our infrastructure is just not being kept up. We don't have the roads to handle hurricane evacuation and our pipes are not being cleaned out. But one of the biggest things we can do to protect what's currently existing is stop increasing density every time, especially along the coastline. I mean, they're talking about quadrupling density on CEST Key for a special hotel and other residential, and that's a danger. I mean, we have that problem. It's one thing to honor what exists today, but if we keep adding homes in the coastal areas, then we're going to have more problems with hurricane evacuation and flooding. And that's going to cause a lot of problems for the existing homeowners.
Okay, we'll come back this direction now. The next question is that Florida municipalities will take a huge hit to their property tax revenues by 2045 due to the loss of income from flood-prone properties. According to one study, homes at risk of high chronic, high-tide flooding in 2045 currently contribute to nearly $350 million in annual property tax revenue in Florida. We should plan to mitigate some of these flood risks and the risk it poses to the local budget.
I'm sorry, can we repeat that again?
No. Okay, Florida municipalities could take a large hit to their property tax revenues by 2045 due to lost income from flood-prone properties. According to a study, homes at risk of chronic high-tide flooding in 2045 currently contribute nearly $350 million in annual property tax revenues in Florida. So what is your plan to mitigate some of these flood risks and/or the risk to the local budget? I'll just do the last part if anybody asks again.
Well, the thing is, the problem is that they caused it all years ago by allowing all of this construction in flood-plained zones. And we should be looking at bailouts. That's what it sounds like they're talking about. So we need to start planning on having a lower income. And I don't believe that adding more homes, they think that that's going to bring in tax revenues to offset what they're going to lose is going to be the answer. So I think the county and the city, the municipalities, the citizens have to start spending less, especially start, stop spending on pet projects like a rowing facility and other things and start learning how to do with less.
All right. I think that one of the things that's most important, when I was the senior of River View in 1982, there was a giant study done that said by the year 2000, the water would be all the way up to the main road going down on Bo Key. It never happened. I certainly believe that sea level, I believe in sea level rise, I know what's happening. I think the most immediate thing we can do is follow the existing rules. Gulf Beach setback line variances in Sarasota County, shockingly are granted 95% of the time. We keep, every time the beach accretes, we just chase it out with buildings and chase it out with buildings. So I think we've got to just quit shooting ourselves in the foot and quit granting Gulf Beach setback line variances. I think that would be a huge step in the right direction.
I agree with that. We actually, just recently, our board of county commissioners approved a home that's 100 feet seaward of the setback line. So yes, stop building further and closer to the beach. To tackle the budget question, currently, actually, our public works director recently reported to our board of county commissioners that our dollars for infrastructure are 20% less effective due to inflation and increasing ADA requirements. So we're getting less for our money already. I think it's time that we have a serious discussion about increasing impact fees for developers that are building in our neighborhoods since those dollars already are not going as far and we are already subsidizing that development. And in terms of preventing those homes from even being flooded in the first place, we need to be seriously looking and following, again, the footsteps of Miami at pump systems, racing roads, doing what we can as a preventative measure rather than reactionary measure.
Now I got mics everywhere.
Karaoke's next.
Well, as county commissioner, one of the very first things I would do, because this isn't really about taxes to me, it's about saving people's homes and their livelihoods and their neighborhoods. So one of the first things is, all of these unmaintained ditches and drainage facilities in our county, we need to address all of those and maintain them, get them up to par. And then we also need to look around and figure out where we need to increase drainage. There's a number of places where we need to do that. Same thing I said before, we need to rethink increasing density on the barrier islands and we need to preserve our rural lands. Our rural lands will hold water and keep the water away from our homes in the urban
Much of what I was going to say has been said, but I think the majority of us agree that we have to start being proactive. And as a commission, we have not been in Sarasota. And even judging from the study of projections of 2045, we need to start thinking into the future. We do have to start building roadways that are higher. We have to stop these variances that are allowing these homes to be put in a dangerous location close to the water. We have to start building higher seawalls, putting in pumping stations. Everything has to be planned out now for the future so that in 2045, the homes are not taken away. As far as tax revenues, this is something that the county commission needs to also work on is budgeting for our future and looking to different revenue sources, not just taxes on properties. And it's something that we have to look at in bringing in business such as solar companies and things like that for our future revenue.
Okay, so I wanted to short this question a little bit because it seems like it's a little bit repetitive from what we just talked about, but so let's do this simply. And we'll start with Ruta and go back down. What is the level of funding that you would put specifically now toward resiliency in response to sea level rise? And if you need more money than we have, how would you fund it?
Well, I think we need more money obviously put into this. And partially, where I think we have to look at our budget is, this is part of safety and security, that is money that should be allocated for our future. These are things that are going to directly impact our lives, infrastructure, roadways, evacuation roads. These are all serious things that we have to look at today. As far as, and I lost my train of thought on the question because they're repetitive a little bit, as far as, maybe the last part?
Basically, what would you do and how would you pay for it with respect to resiliency specifically?
We definitely just need to look at our budgets today, take a look at things that we're allocating that don't have relevance and security. And we have to make sure we do budget properly for our future to make sure that our roadways, our coastal waters, all of that are protected, that we don't have this constant flooding and the potential of natural disasters hitting our area and not being prepared and being ready for it.
So building a resilient community is part of my platform. So the first thing that I would do is do all of the things that we can do that don't necessarily cost us a lot of money, to do all of the things that Sarasota County government is supposed to be doing for us that they're not doing. And then after that, you have to define what that means. What does it mean to be a resilient society? What does it mean to build resilient communities? And then you have to figure out what the needs are. And of course, moving forward with development, once you define that, you make sure that every new community that's built in Sarasota County is built with these concepts of resilience in mind. You don't continue to allow outdated 1980s, 90s style dredge and clear and fill type of development because that is part of the problem and that is what's causing an increase in all of these issues that were discussed this evening.
So in terms of funding, I agree again with what they have already said, but not every fix and not every tactic is going to cost us an arm and a leg. In fact, there are some relatively cheaper options. Hard to say, our local environment being absolutely one of them. Mangroves are shown to mitigate storm surges and things of that nature and also making sure that our wetlands are being protected, the celery fields, we're not putting Whole Foods on wetlands at the University and things like that, because these are essential functions to where that water goes once it does come. So, and again, funding it, these changes, again, I think we need to have a discussion about potentially raising impact fees. If development is actively contributing to this issue, they should absolutely be paying their fair share of this consequence.
Mike?
Yes, sir. Would you be kind enough to just clarify for me? When you're talking about resiliency, are you talking?
Can you use the microphone, please, because there were?
I apologize. I'm just looking for clarification. When you talk about resiliency, are you talking about infrastructure resiliency, county buildings, individual housing? I mean, that's a kind of a wide, or are we supposed to talk about all of that in one minute?
To be honest, I think that part of the question is answering the question so that these folks can evaluate you, so that you figure out what resiliency means and how it's related to policy.
And from, I've watched the building codes change over the years. When I got out of school, I used to draw all my own buildings. After Andrew in 92, I couldn't draw buildings on the barrier islands anymore. And by the year 2000, I had to have a structural engineer do all my drawings forming. Buildings have become much more resilient. I still think we have similar problems. We have, I would prefer personally, 1965 house built in South Gate to a brand-new house being built today. The craftsmanship that we have today is horrible, the materials we have are terrible, the codes are a heck of a lot better, but I still prefer the better materials and better workmanship from a 1960s house in Gulf Gate. So there's a lot of things that we have to do when it comes to resiliency. I think our buildings are certainly headed in the right direction with respect to roads and stuff like that. We're already a billion dollars behind in infrastructure. I think we need to concentrate on that.
Well, I agree with a lot of what they've said here. I do believe impact fees has to be at its full level to make sure new developments pay its own way. I also believe that the county still, as I mentioned before, has to start looking at how they're spending their money. Do we need really $27 million on a beach where they had concrete chase lounges and workwear? I mean, it's just wasteful spending. So I think that kind of future has to be looked at. But I think for resiliency, you have to look at the zoning code. You know, you can't put a house on a small lot and do lot line to lot line pavement and not expect flooding because when you do that, you got complete pavement over lot line. Some of these homes are like two feet apart. It's really ridiculous. Then where is the water going to go, right? It's going to go in the streets and who's going to pay for mitigating that? Us. So I think we have to look at the zoning code. We've got to see how do we start from the homes itself, making sure that that itself can handle the future flooding with each lots and then we can go into other stuff.
Okay, great. This question's been asked the other panel, so you should probably have thought about it before. And it's simply, our hosts would like you to explain in what way is sea level rise related to human impact on the environment? Sort of a factual question.
I believe that obviously it is human impact that causes sea level rise. I mean, you can't have 7 billion people on a planet and not expect some kind of negative impact of that and we're keep growing. I believe we need to really start to be smart about how we develop, how we have homes. You know, the other thing I keep thinking about is the fact that we keep approving homes so that almost every person in the United States can have two homes. I just can't believe that that's going on. And so we really need to start looking at how we grow as a nation, not only a small community, but also how we're growing as a nation, making sure we're doing things the right way. That's how we're going to best, you know, answer the sea level rise.
Mike?
Yes. Certainly, I do believe that human interaction has caused a sea level rise, whether it's through the carbon emissions and whatnot. I think one thing that's kind of interesting, again, going back to building, once upon a time, we had air, we didn't have air conditioning in our house, we're open and they breathe. Then we made them tighter and tighter and tighter as an energy savings measure. Now we've got a point where new air conditioning in commercial buildings actually has to draw in 30% fresh air to make up for the fact that our buildings are so tight that they're not breathing and people getting sick inside of the buildings. So we're kind of like a cat chasing our tail. I believe that communities that are forward-thinking and forward-looking and come up with the alternative energy designs, be it through solar, wind, or whatever, those infrastructure things pay for themselves over time. And I think that's what we need to do is start investing in the long term towards those types of solutions. Thank you.
I think candidate Tracy Pratt said it best and that there is a correlation and causation there. We are contributing to this phenomenon, but that gives me hope in that if we are contributing so heavily, I believe we can, you know, at least taper off some of these issues because I believe in everyone, every single person in this room has the ability to affect change in their own day-to-day life that can help this and keep it from getting worse. I am frankly not interested in snorkeling through my childhood home. So it's high time. You know, we talked about even growing up, we've been talking about it for so long. It is time to do action and to put movement and momentum behind what we're saying. And I will do everything within my power to ensure that that happens because we aren't going to pick up the check, our kids and our grandkids are going to be picking up this check if we aren't acting appropriately.
Well, this is one of those questions where it proves a point why you should elect scientists to government offices, because we use the word climate change and global warming interchangeably and they're two very different phenomenons. Global warming is the phenomenon that we think of when we think of the Ice Age, when we think about how Florida used to have 90 more miles of coast because the ocean was 100 foot shallower. And those things are, global warming is that phenomenon. Climate change is the anthropomorphic things that we do to exasperate those situations. And climate change can only be understood regionally. Federal policy for climate change has a minimal impact. The most important thing is regional understanding of what climate change is doing and the human influences that are exasperating it in that region.
Well, I do believe that we have our hand in what's happening with climate change. On a local level, in Sarasota, when I moved here 20 years ago, I moved from Boston where we had emission control on every car. I moved down here and 20 years later, we still don't have emission controls on cars. You can spew out anything and without any penalty, any observation, you can just go ahead and do that. It has to start on a local level. We have to start putting in things like emission controls. We do have the sun here, we're the sunshine state. When we build, make our builders start building for solar-ready homes. Make sure that we're getting prepared for this for our future so we start, are less being, excuse me, less reliant on fossil fuels and curbing emissions. So we can take that action today as a county and start implementing those changes.
Okay, so we're coming fairly close to the end and I want to do what I did last time so that everybody can remember who you are. And I'm going to reintroduce you and then I'll do a final question. So this is Ruta Gignari. Is that close?
She did it well.
Thank you.
That was good.
Alexandra Coe, they were both running for District 2. Wesleyan Bex, District 4. Mike Costantino, also District 4. And Lourdes Ramirez, sorry, stumbled there, in District, which one are you in?
District 4.
Okay? And so there are your candidates. So we will conclude, unless anybody has any quick questions that I can throw at from the audience with this question, as what are some of the concerns and solutions that you have put forward for affordable housing, particularly as a result of disasters such as hurricanes?
Well, I think as far as hurricanes and affordable housing, they're two different things. I think as a county, we have people who are struggling to find where to live in this county. The rent is so expensive, they can't afford to live here and so they work here and they have to live somewhere else. We have land that we could use to start building perhaps some small, efficient villages that are self-sufficient, where they have markets inside so people don't have to go and use cars as much, don't create traffic as much. We just have to start planning out for our future for affordable housing. In the case of hurricanes, I'm not sure how again that would correlate outside of having proper evacuation roads for everyone. I'm also for having some kind of a rail that would take people out in emergencies, out of Sarasota County, out of the state, instead of using cars, to have a high-speed rail. These are some of the things that I would say go along with that.
That's an interesting question, affordable housing and resilience at the same time. Well, you know, I think that we all have to admit that evacuating in the event of a storm is just unrealistic. It's not going to happen. So we have to think differently about how we're building things, how we are creating community. And we already know that there's not enough affordable housing. So what's the issue with that in the event of a storm? The issue with that in the event of a storm is we have all of these people who work in Sarasota County, but they can't live in Sarasota County. So they're trying to get on the road to get to their house in Palmetto or get to their house someplace else to be able to get their things together to figure out what they're going to do in the storm, when if they just lived in Sarasota County someplace and we figured out how to build affordable housing, then people could stay in place, weather the storm, and we wouldn't have all these people trying to move around.
Well, there's two things that we know in Sarasota County. First, we are dramatically lacking in our available affordable housing. Almost 50% of this county is struggling to pay rent. That is in and of itself unacceptable. And we, so the second thing we know is that lower-income communities are disproportionately affected by this problem. So as the seas continue to rise, flooding starts to happen. We see this in Miami, in Liberty City in particular. We are so far behind in our affordable housing and it's important that we remember that Sarasota does not live in a vacuum. Communities all over this country are tackling this exact issue with a great degree of success. Nashville, they created an affordable housing trust. Texas, there's six counties that are leveraging their resources to create affordable housing. And I just feel like we cannot see why our county cannot do the same and provide a much, much-needed resource.
I think she's gone. Former Rio Grande Metro Executive Director and FIA CP Planner, Mary Ann Bowie, she has a thing that she shared with me, it's like a wagon wheel design. A lot of the people, elder people in our community end up losing a spouse. It's kind of a shared living room kitchen type thing with folks going out for privacy for bedrooms. Another thing is that trying to create tiny home communities. Both of these can be resilient. We have to be willing to We have to be willing to look at increased density to be able to put these things in areas of testing infrastructure. That being said, I think that, I just, I want to tell you, this is less about the people that are here and more about the people that aren't here. The three of us that are for District Four and the two of those folks over there for District Two, you have great candidates here. Just please try to avoid Al Mano and Christian Ziegler. And I'm going to leave it at that.
I want to say ditto. The, I think it's, you know, I want to say thank you first for everybody who's out here and cares so much and all the candidates that showed up for this,